The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 11th, 2024. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier-News and TAP into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise with pledge of allegiance.
I will call the roll. Mr. DeSai?
Yes.
Ms. This is Whitebaum? Ms. Keller?
Yeah.
Mr. Moffeta?
Yeah.
Mr. Otto?
Yeah.
Mr. Tor?
Yeah.
Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
This is on.
Here.
To the forum.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10-11 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education ensures to close sessions to discuss, material to disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy. Action will be taken upon return from the session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be part of 15 minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public and in need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Opposed? Abstain? The board is in executive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Opposed? Abstain? The board is back in regular session.
Dissolved at the Board of Education's first public and Friday session.
All right. This is on the minutes. Mr. DeSai?
Yeah.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Moffeta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
This is on.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to him.
Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingo.
Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. For correspondence, the board received one email regarding security. In the HIB investigations, there was one investigation at Central School, which was not confirmed, one investigation at Warren Middle School, which was not confirmed, and on the suspension report, one in-school and one out-of-school suspension at the middle school, and one out-of-school suspension at Central School.
Thank you, Dr. Mingo. We will be doing annual adoptions this evening. Dr. Mingo, do you have any comments on the annual? No? Does any board member wish to pull any of the annual adoptions for separate voter discussion?
I would. Option one.
Okay.
Motion to adopt the annual adoptions, section eight, items two, three A through three W, four A through F, five A through five E, six, and seven A.
Second. I will call the roll on the annual adoptions. Mr. DeSai?
Yeah.
Ms. Keller? Mr. Moffeta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
This is on.
Yes.
Motion's passed, eighteen.
Okay. Mr. Moffeta? Do you wish just to have a separate vote on this or also a discussion?
Separate vote.
All right, then. Ms. Keller, your turn.
Motion to adopt any adoption section eight, item one.
You have second?
Second.
I'll call the roll. Mr. DeSai?
Yeah.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Moffeta?
No.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
No.
This is on.
Yes.
Motion's pass. May most of the motion passes six.
Good evening. We have quite a crowd here this evening. Good evening and welcome to the May 13th meeting of the Warren Board of Education. I actually have four separate sets of remarks this evening, any one of which would be more than sufficient for this spot on the agenda, but each are important. So I apologize in advance for the length of my remarks. This last week marked the annual fifth grade Capstone Project presentations at each of our K-5 schools. Our amazing fifth graders had the opportunity to showcase their presentation and research skills, focusing on plausible solutions to zero hunger, good health and well-being, quality education, and gender equity. Along with other members of our community, fellow board member and vice president Laura Keller, as well as invited dignitaries from outside the community, I had the honor of judging 12 of the presentations at three of our K-5 schools. The entire community, including the students, teachers, mentors, parents, should all be very proud of all the work that was done researching, learning, and making a plan on how to make positive changes in the world. I am confident that these young learners are on their way to shaping and improving the world we all live in. Ms. Keller, would you like to share anything?
Can everybody hear me? Yeah, good. And I, this is the third year I was a judge, and I absolutely love this event. I'm gonna start with a plug for anything always a thing for judges. So next year, this time, put a little mental note in your in the calendar to decide should be a judge. The, the students have 10 hours to research a topic that they likely have never researched or thought about before, and to come up with a solution for it that's actually tangible and actionable. And they don't get much support from teachers. That's by design. The parents can't help them. And then they have to prepare to present in front of a bunch of strangers or yourself. And it's not only an opportunity for them to learn about a topic they're not familiar with and to figure out how to define a problem and define solution, but the actual experience of doing the Capstone exercise is an opportunity to work with people they've never worked with. They're not paired with their friends necessarily. They have to learn how to work together, to delegate, to divide up the work, which is very good preparation for the room, as we all know. So I just love this event. I love being a judge for it. And I want everybody to kind of put that mental thing for next April. This is really, really encourage adults, sorry kids, but adults to participate in this because it's really wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. On May 20th at 7 o'clock, there will be an informational overview of the Watchon Hills Community Shared Services Regionalization Feasibility Study, being led by the Rowan School Regionalization Institute. The overview will discuss the parameters of the study, the timeline, community involvement, why the Watchon Hills Regional High School and Watchon Boards of Education asked to initiate the study, and what opportunities the study could illustrate for all of the school districts in the Watchon Hills cluster. Pre-registration for this information session can be found on the Watchon Hills Regional High School website. I understand that the session will also be recorded and available for later viewing for anyone who cannot attend. Again, this overview will be held on May 20th at 7 o'clock. Early on the morning of May 3rd, 2024, the training, professionalism, and dedication of our staff in an emergency situation was put to the test. Early that day, the Warren Middle School received a bonafide. To order superintending when addressing the staff, Toot or superintendent when addressing the staff, quote, "The examples of staff members jumping in to do whatever needed to be done are countless, and any attempt to highlight specific examples would only serve to leave out others." We saw the best of what makes Warren Middle School great in how quickly the staff responded to the first announcements, regrouped as the plan shifted outside the building, and supported students and their families in the midst of trying circumstances. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank the middle school teachers and staff for their calm, professional dedication to our students. I want to thank our district's security staff, who have worked hard to train and support all our staff in responding to just such a situation. I want to thank our administration, who in the midst of a potential crisis, guided a full district response that saw administrators in other buildings rapidly deploy to ensure that students and staff throughout the district had the necessary support as they started their school days. And finally, I want to thank the Warren Police Department for its immediate response, which, supported by other law enforcement, was instrumental in the safe and rapid clearing of the threat and the return of the middle school to operations. Our gratitude for the support of the local police cannot be overstated. I also want to take this moment to repeat comments I made at the Township Committee meeting on May ninth, when I was invited by Mayor Sirgillo to address the committee. What many may not know is that this is not a one-time moment of excellence. Over just the last two months during the ordinary operations of a school district, our schools have called upon police, EMS, and fire, and on our own security and teaching staff on ten different occasions to respond to emergencies. Whether responding to medical emergencies, suspicious vehicles on school grounds, car accidents near school property, additional support during an event at the high school, or the May three bomb threat, the Warren Board of Education has relied on these same professionals, some of whom are volunteer first responders, to come to the aid of our staff and students. Warren is one community. We are all interdependent, and working hard to make Warren the best home for all our families. A place where we socialize, work, serve, and educate. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I wish to extend our thanks and gratitude to the Warren Police, EMS, and Fire, and to the Warren School District Administration, teachers, and all of our staff. And finally, I'm happy that tonight I'm in a position to share one more concrete way in which all of Warren works together. One community, where whether through the work of the town committee or the Board of Education, we are all striving together towards the same goal. At its May ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Township Committee, Mr. George Lazzo, committee member and liaison from the committee to the Board of Education, announced an innovative and praiseworthy plan to make a distribution of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in pilot funds to the Warren Township Board of Education for the twenty-four twenty-five school year. The funds will be designated for the purpose of improving technology and will have the secondary benefit of reducing rising operational costs of the district. We expect that this is the first of what will be continuing conversations regarding pilot proceeds and the needs of our community. Pilot funds are managed exclusively by the township, which is not legally required to provide any of these funds to the schools. This fact makes the proposed share in pilot proceeds truly groundbreaking. After many years of conversations between members of the Township Committee and the Board of Education, we are grateful for this mutually beneficial and purposeful way that the town committee has committed to support all the district employees, students, and their families. A more formal press release will be forthcoming, along with the signing of a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar agreement. But let me take a moment to recognize the last two years of teams that have worked towards this phenomenal outcome. On behalf of the Township Committee, Mr. Daniel Crozen, Mr. George Lazzo, and Ms. Vanessa Keen have worked as liaisons, supported by Mr. Crane, Mark Crane, as town administrator. And on behalf of the Board of Education, Mr. David Brzee, Mr. Scott Otto, and myself, supported by Mr. Chris Hegel as board administrator. This outcome would not have been possible without the continual efforts and goodwill of these respective teams and all the committee and board members. Superintendent's remarks, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mrs. On. It's great to see everybody here tonight. We have a lot of celebrating to do. I'm going to start that with a couple of announcements that are not related to the recognition that our principals will share. First, on the student side, two Warren Middle School students won cash prizes for their performance in the New Jersey Water Environment Association Student Essay Competition. Jasmine Boya was runner-up for the north section of schools, and Mason Marucci was second place for the north section and third place statewide. Congratulations to both of them. Congratulations also to Warren Middle School student Eva Bella Krishnan for her honorable mention in the Trust for Sustainable Living Student Essay Contest, answering the question, "How can nature help us achieve the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals in my community?" I'm going to say this one twice because I didn't believe it the first time I read it from Dr. Cooper, but Eva is the only student from the United States to be recognized with that achievement, so the other recipients are from all over the world. I didn't even have to say it twice. They got it faster than I did. And then there's also been a couple of important recognition dates recently. On May first was School Principals' Day, so, and all of our school principals are here today. Thank you for everything that you do for our schools each and every day. May eighth was School Nurses' Day, and we have at least one of our school nurses here. And as Mrs. On was talking about the emergency first responders, I'm reminded that our first line of defense from our staff side is often our school nurses to those very same incidents, so thank you to all of our school nurses. And last week, as many of you probably know, was Teacher Appreciation Week, and how fitting for us to spend this first board meeting after Teacher Appreciation Week doing just that with the rest of our public presentations. So thank you all for being here, and I believe we're ready to turn it over to our principals.
I believe that's correct. Presentations.
Good evening. It is my honor to announce Mrs. Joan Toth as this year's Teacher of the Year from Woodland School. The characteristics that make Mrs. Toth such an amazing educator begins with her commitment to her students and her passion in helping those students meet their potential. Mrs. Toth skillfully crafts lessons that are differentiated to meet, to meet each individual need. She approaches each year and each assignment with a positive attitude and a dedication that is always impressive. Her infectious smile and nurturing ways continue to create a positive environment. Mrs. Toth has had some of her own personal challenges in her life. Throughout each of those challenges, she has been a model of resiliency and determination, which have earned her the ultimate respect of the entire school community. Students and staff see her as a role model and a person they can always count on. Mrs. Toth treats her students as if they were her own. Mrs. Toth also has the most sincere admiration from all of her colleagues and is known at Woodland School as a master teacher. She again puts the needs of others before her own. She collaborates extremely well with everyone, and her co-teaching classrooms have been the model of excellence in our district. One of Ms. Toth's colleagues writes, "Mrs. Toth's impact extends far beyond the classroom, leaving an indelible mark on the hearts and minds, and is an essential part of our school's spirit and our culture. She provides a warmth and kind-hearted spirit that brightens the mood of those around her. She naturally brings a smile to the faces of all students and staff. It is so easy to see that she loves her job, she loves our school, and most importantly, she loves her students. To me, the best compliment you can give a teacher is a huge impact that they've had on the students and their colleagues. Without question, Joan is that teacher. Without question, we are lucky to have Joan as part of the Woodland family. She truly represents all that is great about being a teacher and is gifted in so many ways. Most importantly, she's an even better human being." Congratulations to Joan Toth. Joan, Joan could not be with us tonight because she's actually at her daughter's senior night for lacrosse, so I told her, that's a, that's a good excuse. Moving on, it's my pleasure to announce Sue Francione as Woodland's Educational Service Professional of the Year. Now in her eleventh year, Sue Francione is beloved, respected, and always friendly paraprofessional at Woodland School. Mrs. Francione is the definition of excellence. Each day, she works to ensure that students have what they need academically, socially, and emotionally. She's one of the first to greet students upon arrival, and her smile and nurturing demeanor play a significant role in ensuring that all students feel welcome and safe. Ms. Francione wears many hats through her days at Woodland. She can be observed in all parts of the building, helping students navigate social challenges during recess, ensuring that students are eating balanced meals in the lunchroom, or helping a student in any way they need. She truly is a team player and works to ensure that every student feels supported. Ms. Francione will help any student, any staff, or any family in need, and she approaches every challenge with a "we got this" attitude. Time and time again, parents will comment that Mrs. Francione's presence at Woodland School is monumental in making feel like their child has a home away from home. There's no question that Mrs. Francione is a go-to person for every staff person in the building. She has the ultimate respect of her colleagues and was an unanimous choice for the Educational Services Professional of the Year. One of her colleagues wrote, "Sue plays a pivotal role in establishing the Woodland School environment as a true place of belonging. She embodies the true spirit of team player and is an outstanding candidate for this award. Personally, I can't say enough about how lucky I am to work alongside Sue Francione. She truly represents everything great about our school. Just last week, the PTO handed out framed hearts with words written about each staff member. Here are some of the words that the students shared about Mrs. Francione. She's the first person I see every morning and is always welcoming and clearly has a kind heart. She always makes us feel safe. She brightens our day and is endlessly helpful, and my personal favorite. Mrs. Francione is the rock of our school. The entire Woodland community joins me in congratulating Mrs. Francione for an award that is so well-deserved. Her efforts through the years have always made Woodland a safe and happy place for students, staff, and their families. Congratulations, Sue."
Mount Horv School is extremely proud to recognize Mrs. Michelle McMahon as this year's Governor's Educator of the Year Award. Hello, McMahon clan. How we doing over there? Doing well? Good? Good numbers over there. Mrs. McMahon has had her heart set on teaching since she was a little girl, playing with her giant chalkboard. She would invite neighborhood friends, play the teacher, make up tests, and even correct papers. Her formal career began in Philadelphia, where she taught fifth grade to thirty-five students. After one year in Philadelphia, she took a second grade position in Morristown, New Jersey, for seven years. Here is where her leadership qualities were fostered, noticed, and promoted as the, quote, "helping teacher." Mrs. McMahon also completed her masters during this time. Mrs. McMahon has now been in Warren Township for eleven years, teaching various elementary grades. Her classroom has that palpable magic that is difficult to truly identify and impossible to teach. Her students are excited to come in each morning, I see it, thrive in her presence, make progress each year, and then return to visit, complete with hugs, a year later. Mrs. McMahon's skills are many, but a standout quality is the safety that she creates in her classroom for all types of learners to thrive, take risks, and push themselves beyond their comfort zones. She's masterful and consistent with holding children accountable to the very high bar that she sets. As a classroom teacher, she employs a style that is engaging, thought-provoking, and very inclusive of her students. Her lessons most often include two-way dialogue. She learns with her students, and outside of the classroom, she contributes in so many ways. She's a resource to many, a friend, a confidant, and a leader. She participates in school-wide functions, contributes to committee work, and helps to set direction in so many areas within the school. Her colleagues listen to her when she speaks. Her care for her students and their progress knows no boundaries. She creates and maintains excellent relationships and often helps them to better parent their own... Sorry. She maintains excellent relations with her, with parents, and often helps them become better parents as a result. She is by all measures an outstanding educator. It is clear that her little self would be extremely proud of her current self, with the many accomplishments that she has and had, she's had in her illustrious career, most notably this one. The Mount Horv community is very lucky to have Mrs. McMahon on staff, and we are all so very proud of you. Congratulations, Mrs. McMahon. Andrew Lincoln, that was a nice touch right there, boys. Well done. Mrs. Provado could not be here with us tonight, but I am going to very proudly read what I prepared to support Mrs. Provado. She is this year's Mount Horv's Educational Services Provider Award recipient. Mrs. Provado's teaching career began in South Brunswick as a middle school English teacher. From there, she's been in special education for twelve years. She's a Bachelor of Arts in Literature Communications and a Master's of Education in English Education. For the past eleven years, Mrs. Provado has provided one-on-one support to special education students in Warren Township. This has included the LLD and ABA centers, and she's currently in her sixth year as a one-to-one paraprofessional in our preschool disabled program. Mrs. Provado possesses innate qualities that continue to allow her to be anything to any student that she comes in contact with. This simple fact has allowed her to be tremendously successful with our most challenging groupings of children over the years. Whether working with very young autistic children, differently-abled students in an elementary resource room, or our very diverse preschool population, she's masterful with her technique, technique, approach, care, concern, and understanding with each child. Having been in the proverbial thick of it with Mrs. Provado and a few of our children, even in crisis, she is never anything less than calm and thoughtful, and always thinks about safety and forward progress. Her mindset is one of growth, optimism, and hope, even when sometimes the data doesn't suggest that progress has or will be made. Her colleagues love her, are inspired by her, and desperately want to work with her. Years ago, her colleagues elevated her to the unofficial head para position. With this role, she advocates for all of her paraprofessional colleagues, and in this role, Mrs. Provado is never anything less than a total class act. Even when issues may bring tension, she's thoughtful, honest, direct, and takes part in the creation of a solution. Knowing that Mrs. Provado is a member of a classroom brings everyone a great sense of calm. Any job or suggestion is given to Mrs. Provado, it is guaranteed to be done both to the best of her ability, but also in an absolutely top-notch fashion. All Mrs. Provado knows is above and beyond. With her own effort and the quality of her product, the Mount Horv community is extremely lucky to have Mrs. Provado on staff, and we are all very proud of her. I hope you're watching at home, Mrs. Provado. Congratulations.
Right. So last, I would like to introduce Mrs. Celeste Ostry as Central School's Governor's Educator of the Year. Not unlike other high-caliber teachers, Mrs. Ostry possesses a refined and intentional pedagogy, a... a professional demeanor, and the earned respect of her students, families, colleagues, and supervisors. What sets Mrs. Ostry apart, however, is her dedication to go the extra mile for her students and her community. Mrs. Ostry's first priority is always to develop relationships with, with each individual student she comes in contact with. She gets to know her students and their families and plans lessons around their specific interests and motivations. Instead of recycling lessons each year, she regularly finds new ways for students to practice the application of skills based on student choice. Third, fourth, and fifth grade students who have routinely found school hard are bolstered through leadership opportunities, teaching younger students and representing Central in the community. This year, Mrs. Ostry's students created a zoo. They work together to conduct research, transform their classroom, and host visitors. Outside of school, Mrs. Ostry attends student recitals, sporting events, and other proud moments her students participate in. She values the social and emotional security of each student as much as the academic achievement. She's often the first person to volunteer for committee work, family nights, or PTO events outside of school hours. Despite teaching students in intermediate grades when she heard there was a need, was a need for additional extracurricular activities for our youngest students, she developed a new after-school club catered to these learners. She does this while also tirelessly pursuing her own professional growth, always after the next certification that she might use to benefit her students. Educators who earn this honor are awarded with a monetary gift to use in their classroom. While recipients are always thoughtful about how to use it, Mrs. Ostry went above and beyond. She thought about what might benefit all students. She used her money to research and create Lego carts that the entire school could share. Because she believes that the, that, she, she believes and values that the building of community is a cornerstone for learning. Her commitment to her students and broader school community is unparalleled. Her innovative teaching methods, commitment to professional development, and active participation in community events inspire and encourage those around her. Most importantly, each of her students know without exception that they are loved. Congratulations, Celeste. Alright Fran, I gotta make sure I can see you and the girls. Alright, Mrs. Francesca Frizzoni is Central Schools' recipient of the Educational Services Professional of the Year Honor. As an instructional coach, Mrs. Frizzoni works with students, teachers, and administrators to support and guide on all things instruction. Prior to serving as an instructional specialist, she had emerged as a teacher-leader, developing innovative and captivating lessons and inspiring her students to love learning. In her current role, her job description is endless. She dedicates herself to mentoring new staff, acquainting them with curriculum frameworks and educational resources, serving as a lifeline for first-year teachers navigating the challenges of their early careers. Seasoned educators often call on Mrs. Frizzoni as a brainstorming partner when faced with a new challenge. She collects and curates resources, both proactively and in response to specific requests. Oftentimes, the meetings she attends take place after or before school hours. She serves on a variety of committees. She's an integral part of INRS and takes a leadership role on the SEL Committee. She's been a driving force this year behind the Capstone Experience, the ELA Program Pilot, and supporting a community of belonging as Central saw nearly half of its student population change as a result of rezoning. Always seeking additional knowledge, Mrs. Frizzoni continues her own professional development too. She meets regularly with consultants, attends workshops, and stays up to date on current research. Afterwards, she shares her knowledge with colleagues, creating Warren Academy courses around topics in classroom management, technology, and subject-specific pedagogies. Above all, she's flexible, responsive, and solution-oriented. She's often the first person called when something goes awry in real time. Whether it be a challenge with devices or software, she troubleshoots and taps into resources until a resolution is found. Even when what is being asked is outside of her area of expertise or even her job description. Just this morning, she became the solver of technology glitches during NJSLA. Fran is approachable and dependable. She has earned the trust of her peers who feel comfortable asking her for support and guidance. While much of the work Mrs. Frizzoni does is behind the scenes, the impact is felt by all in our school community. Congratulations, Fran. ALT is proud to recognize Mrs. Tara Lento as our recipient of the Governor's Educator of the Year. This school year marks Mrs. Lento's eighteenth year of serving children in Warren Township alone as a special education teacher. She began her career working in Woodland School and soon found her home at ALT, where she has served as a resource room teacher for many, many years. Mrs. Lento is known throughout the building as the upper elementary expert for developing accommodations and modifications for students with a wide array of learning needs. She is the definition of a team player, consistently offering her time, expertise, or access to her keenly organized binders containing a wide array of carefully crafted learning tools and assessments that she's developed over the years. Mrs. Lento's love for her students is the driving force behind her success. She works tires- tirelessly to understand and appreciate the uniqueness of each child. This is one reason why she was nominated by a record number of colleagues and parents this year. The nominations captured her talent as a quote "master of differentiation" with the perfect balance of firmness and compassion when she works with her students. She's been able to transform our most reluctant learners into students who seek to work with her. A parent noted how Mrs. Lento works tirelessly to make learning fun for the class and offered a prime example of her strategic expertise. This parent noted how Mrs. Lento harnessed the competitive nature of her son and used it to make math a game to hold his interest. This is one example of countless ways that she learns about her individual students and uses her knowledge to engage, motivate, and inspire them as lifelong learners. Tara Lento is an exemplary educator who puts children above her own personal well-being and has demonstrated devotion like no other. She has faced significant personal challenges, but never stopped thinking about the needs of her students. She has the mindset of a fighter, fueled with the determination to find a way for her students to succeed despite the most challenging needs or circumstances. Her passion to support her students is a force to be reckoned with, and we are honored to recognize her as our Governor's Educator of the Year. Congratulations, Tara. ALT is now honored to recognize Mr. Oscar Alfaro as the Governor's Educational Support Professional of the Year. Our school was fortunate to begin working with Mr. Alfaro in 2022 when he was seeking to build upon an already impressive resume of life experiences. After serving our country as a United States Marine, working in the financial industry in New York City and opening two successful Taekwondo studios, Mr. Alfaro was eager to further his positive impact upon the world by working in schools and earning his teaching certificate. With his unique skills and attributes, Mr. Alfaro was quickly moved from a broad professional, paraprofessional role, serving all students to a role in which his heart and dedication support our students with emotional regulation impairments. In this role, Mr. Alfaro served as a dependable member of a team where he was consistently ready to take direction and maintain a standard of respect for these students in need of love and support. Almost instantly, Mr. Alfaro made a profound impact upon our entire school community. He is the epitome of humility in all that he does and serves as a model of patience, care, and warmth. One of his nominations noted how Mr. Alfaro is the definition of an educational support professional describing how he remains positive in very difficult situations and helps to maintain an effective learning environment within the classroom. His supportive education extends well beyond the classroom as well. Mr. Alfaro responds to medical emergencies on the school's medical emergency response team, as well as the building crisis team. But one of his most direct impacts upon our school community is his work after school hours as the advisor of a Taekwondo club for children of all ages and abilities. While this club naturally centers on focus and self-discipline, Mr. Alfaro also works to modify the program for students with significant special needs. He has created an enrichment opportunity that is exempt, an exemplar of acceptance and belonging for all students. As stated earlier, it is an honor to recognize Mr. Alfaro for the Governor's Educational Support Professional of the Year. We are truly honored that our students and our entire school community have the privilege to work with him as an outstanding model of citizenship, dedication, and eagerness to serve others. Congratulations, Mr. Alfaro.
Good evening. I'm gonna apologize to you first that my voice should give out on Friday. I chaperoned the seventh and eighth grade music in the parks trip with our class, and I was a little too zealous in expressing my joy at riding roller coasters, which resulted in this. So, here we go. It is my honor tonight to present to you the Warren Middle School Educator of the Year, O'Brien Speck. Mrs. Specken has been a member of the Warren Middle School family for over eighteen years. Although originally a math teacher, it was through grade-seven science that she distinguished herself as a master teacher. Her regular classroom instruction provides our students with engaging, dynamic lessons that empower students to be curious while learning the foundations of earth science. She is highly skilled at applying her expertise to help students understand complex ideas in everyday ways. In addition to her instructional practice, Mrs. Specken is the grade-seven team leader. In this role, she serves as the voice of, of, as a voice and energy of a dynamic group of professionals. While reserved with her comments, when she speaks, the team listens. At the core of her leadership is a vision for creating a positive school environment for all. Our students very much look forward to Mrs. Specken's class as she meets them wherever they are and finds ways to stoke their interest. Step into her classroom on any given day and you'll find students huddled together over microscopes and petri dishes, exploring and asking questions of one another. For her part, Mrs. Specken guides students by creating rich experiences that invite students to apply their knowledge and discover. Mrs. Specken's compassion comes from her deep love and devotion to her family. She's a proud mother of five children, who, along with her husband Kevin, are the center of her experience. Her empathetic approach to student development is a quality that is greatly appreciated by our parents and students alike. Patience and understanding are an active part of her classroom culture. Mrs. Specken is a model teacher who is exemplary in her professionalism and her humanity. Please help me congratulate Mrs. Speck.
Mrs. Moon is a consummate professional who has served Warren Middle School in a variety of ways during her eight years with us. We first came to know Mrs. Moon as a substitute teacher while her two sons were still in elementary school. She distinguished herself as highly reliable and quickly became the substitute preference. This led to both short and long-term positions, as Mrs. Moon always made herself available to step in when needed. When the opportunity presented itself for a paraprofessional position, Mrs. Moon was our logical choice, even though it deprived of us of a highly reliable sub. Over the last four years, Mrs. Moon, Mrs. Moon's flexibility, calm demeanor, and patience has given her students the opportunity to find their way back to their educational focus as they work through areas of challenge. Mrs. Moon is understanding and kind and serves as a valuable resource for students. As a devoted mother of two young men, she shares this nurturing, supportive approach with her WMS students, along with the ability to proactively address student issues and provide the needed support. Finally, Mrs. Moon is a highly reliable colleague who contributes to our school community and culture in many ways. She serves as a resource for other paraprofessionals, as well as members of our child study team. We are proud that Mrs. Moon is a member of our Warren Middle School family and are pleased to award her the Educational Services Professional of the Year.
Uh, we have one additional recognition that is outside the Governor's Educator of the Year. Tonight, it is my honor to share with you two awards for Dr. Simone Miller. For those who did not know Dr. Miller, she is a sixth-grade science teacher at Warren Middle School, has been part of our district for eighteen years. She is also the proud mother of two adult daughters and a wonderful person to know. Walk into Dr. Miller's classroom anytime and you will find her working side by side with students. Her exemplary practices guide students to explore the natural world around them and understand its workings through scientific explanations. Her practical approach to science empowers students to analyze the importance of the sun, moon, stars, and atmosphere on our planet. Dr. Miller, while patient, is also demanding. She equip, equips her students with tools and vocabulary to describe and define their environments while becoming young scholars. Thus, I am happy to share with you that earlier this year, Dr. Miller was recognized by the National Association of Geoscience Teachers as an outstanding earth science teacher for the state of New Jersey. This recognition goes to any teacher who covers a significant amount of earth science content with their students. Dr. Miller is one of ten teachers to be recognized nationally. In addition, Dr. Miller is a state finalist with the Presidential Award of Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. The P A E M S T is the highest honor bestowed by the United States government through the White House. It is specifically for K-12 science, technology, engineering, and math teachers to recognize those who both have a deep content knowledge of the subjects while they teach and the ability to motivate students and engage students to be successful in those areas. Dr. Miller is one of three finalists representing the state of New Jersey. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Simone Miller for both of these professional achievements. Thank you.
I'd like to invite all the recipients, their families, and the administrators to have pictures taken. We have a backdrop over here, so we're gonna pause the, the meeting for a few minutes here, so you can all do that.
Hello.
So I'm going to summon my board members back, please. Get back to work. So, a big thank you to the, all of the staff and teachers that were recognized this evening. I think it's apparent that we are very blessed with some really fabulous teaching staff. We're very grateful for them. Moving on, there is nothing on discussion for this evening, so we're going to committee reports. Curriculum and Technology Committee does not have a report out for this evening. So moving from there to Finance Operations and Security. The Finance Operations Security Committee met Wednesday, May first, with all members present. Although it was a somewhat lengthy meeting, the content of the meeting really was just a detailed look at the project lists for the upcoming approval of the five-year, new five-year capital plan. For board members, you can take a look at the minutes for what that discussion looked like. That discussion is ongoing. It is the hope the committee, its next finance committee meeting, will be able to arrive at a final approval to present something to the full board. In addition to the review of the five-year capital improvement plan, the committee also approved the presentation of the contract appearing tonight as B eight for the science labs. And that is all. Moving on from there to the Personnel Negotiations and Communications Committee, Ms. Keller.
Yes, the Personnel Negotiations Communications Committee met on April twenty ninth. We reviewed the salary recommendations for non-aligned staff members, which is on the agenda for April the ninth. And at the March eighteenth Board of Education meeting, this committee had been tasked by the full board with reviewing the district's opt-out procedures and to report back to the full board with any conclusions and recommendations. During our April twenty ninth committee meeting, we discussed the current policy and procedures for being excused from certain classroom instructions. The relevant policy is policy five-two-five-zero, spudel from a classic program, which is consistent with state law. Our related procedures to that emphasize the importance of teacher-parent communication and parent understanding of the content being taught. At the middle school, parents are advised by health teachers on back-to-screen light what is covered and when in the curriculum. They encourage parents to email them for additional information or any questions they may have. If the parents choose to opt their student out, they email Mr. Vilar with that request. At the elementary level, family life content is delivered in a video format. Parents and guardians are advised in advance of the video and given the option to preview. If parents choose to opt their student out of watching the video, they email the school principal. In addition to the above information shared with parents and guardians by teachers, the summer registration form in Genesis provides parents a summary of all topics addressed in each grade levels' health curriculum, a link to the board-approved curriculum documents, and information about how to proceed if parents have questions or wish to have their child excused. The committee, Mr. Weinstein, Mrs. Whitebaum, and myself, discussed the above procedures, what I just covered, and considered whether any improvements can be made. Overall, the committee feels the current opt-out procedures work well. Parents are taking advantage of the option to review content, so we feel they are effectively being made aware of any sensitive topics. We feel it is important to rely on teachers to make parents feel comfortable with the topics being taught. Parents have the right to choose for their child if they don't want their student included in the lesson, and the process is simple, requiring an email to the principal. Separate from the district's health curriculum, we are required to provide child abuse prevention programming to children in kindergarten and grade. As discussed at the March eighteenth board meeting, the typical advanced notification about that program did not go out to parents in several classes at Mount Park School. The administration has addressed this issue internally and with the external provider. In addition to the regular notifications about this program, beginning next year, notice will be provided in the summer registration process as well. We believe this redundancy will further enhance parents' access to information about critical topics like this.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. There is no report out on the Ad Hoc Strategic Planning Committee, so we will move now to the first opportunity for public commentary. This is the first of two opportunities for public commentary. I ask that anyone interested in addressing the board, please raise their hand or use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address, and by directing your comments to the presiding officer that will be in. Please note that the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Public commentary is intended as an opportunity for the board to receive such input, but is not intended as a Q and A session. Following public commentary, if appropriate, the presiding officer or the superintendent may provide some response. For this first opportunity, we ask that your comments be limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. There will be a second comment opportunity for all other comments later in the meeting. So at this time, looking to our audience, does anyone in the audience wish to speak? Yes, please.
Hi, Nancy Andrews, the president of the Warren Township Education Association. I just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate all of our recipients of the Governor's Education of the Year awards. They are excellent examples of what exemplary education looks like. The WTA is proud to have these men and women represent us, so congratulations on your well-earned recognition.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Andrews, for your comments. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none. Is there anyone in our Zoom audience that would like to be heard at this public commentary? Seeing no one. Do I have a motion to close? Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? This first opportunity for public commentary has now closed. Dr. Mingle, do you have any items that you'd like to draw our attention to under items for board consideration?
I do, thank you. First, under the reorg agenda, substitute pay was approved, and I just want to mention for the members of the public that for the last four or five years or so, we've been, we changed from a, only a periodic review of our substitute pay to an annual review, and as a result, our substitute pay is highly competitive for the area. And if you know people who are substitute teaching, working as substitute nurses, or as paraprofessionals in other places, we would love to have them join us here in Warren. And we try to take care of our substitutes because it's really important that we have the highest quality men and women in those positions. And so I just wanted to point out that that's on, that that was on the agenda. The board already approved that as part of the reorg as a way of making sure that our substitutes feel valued as they are. I also wanted to highlight item B eight, which Mrs. Zahn mentioned earlier in the finance report out. That's the middle school science lab at HVAC upgrades. Just want to thank the Finance Committee, Mr. Hagel as school business administrator, and everybody who's worked on this. This is the final set of projects tied to the most recent referendum. This is updating all of the science labs at the middle school, which were original to the building fifty-two years ago and are in due need of this upgrade. And it's really nice to have that project moving forward as a result of several years of hard work by a lot of people. And then finally, it's, it's hard to tell just by looking at the agenda, but this meeting is the most challenging meeting of the year from an agenda development standpoint, because it is when all four hundred or so of our employees are reappointed or appointed for the next year. And so I wanted to thank Catherine Gorsky, who's went through her first meeting as human resources coordinator in a year where there was also a new WTEA contract, which made making sure all the salaries were right extra challenging and important. She was supported by a lot of people, including Mr. Hagel and the entire business staff and many others, but great job. It's a lot of work to pull together for this agenda, especially we only had two weeks between meetings. So, thank you, everybody, and we're happy to have everybody on the agenda tonight for a moment.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Does any member of the board have any item or board consideration that they wish to pull for a separate vote or discuss? Okay, seeing none. I do believe we have an addition.
We have an additional item A four. We've all, that the Board of Education affirms the recommendation of the superintendent and the special board subcommittee regarding student six-two-two-two-zero-three. That's part of A section. So, motion to approve items for board consideration A one through A four, B one through B nine, and C one through C twenty-three.
Right. I'll call the role on the consent agenda. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valvetta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Thank you.
There is no unfinished business for this evening. On new business, we have the NJ SVA Delegate Assembly, and for that, I defer to our representative to the assembly.
I think I'm the alternate, but I will be the representative now. We are going to figure out attendance for Saturday, which is when it is, to be sure that we have someone there, and then we'll report back during the next board meeting.
Okay, just in furtherance, the copies of the fourteen resolutions that are on the agenda for the Delegate Assembly for Saturday were provided to the board members in advance. Does any board member have any comment with regard to any of the fourteen resolutions? Okay, so absent any comment, then the direction to the delegate would be to vote in accordance with the recommendations of the New Jersey School Boards Association. Is everyone comfortable? Okay. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to say with regard to the Delegate Assembly? Okay, seeing none. This is now the second opportunity for public commentary, and it is open to any topic you wish to raise to the board's attention. Again, I ask that you raise your hand or use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Remember that comments are limited to three minutes, and please state your name and address before beginning. Looking first to the room. And seeing nobody. Now going to Zoom. Is there anyone in our Zoom audience that would like to address the board? Last chance. All right, seeing nobody. Do I have a motion to close second opportunity? There a second on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The board is adjourned. Thank you.